All right, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of January 22nd to order. Great, it is 6:04 PM. Welcome to Missoula City Council, good to see everybody here. We are gonna go ahead and, just as a quick reminder to turn off your cell phones if you can. Appreciate that, thank you. So we'll go ahead and do a call to order and roll call, and it looks like everybody is here except Councilwoman Gwen Jones. So go ahead and not do a roll call if that's all right with everybody, we've got 11 of 12 city council members here. Thank you. All right. Item number two on the agenda this evening is approval of the minutes. We have one set of minutes from January 8th of 2024. Wondering if any councillors have additions or corrections this evening? Not seeing any? All right, then the minutes of January 8th will go ahead and are approved as submitted. Next, we'll move on to agenda item number three, which is public comment, and this is public comment on non-agenda items. Just as a reminder, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and that we have, keep those comments respectful and civil tone. And I'll go ahead and ask whomever to come on up, please say and spell your name, please. Thank you. And just also as a reminder as well, if you are here to your own accord, wonderful, if you are here representing an organization, if you will just make sure that you clarify that for the record as well. Thank you. All right, come on up, public comment. Mr. Gray?
My name is David Gray. I appreciate the work the council has done on the Jedi in equity and housing studies in Missoula. I especially appreciate that all neighborhoods are supposed to participate in providing more density. I happen to live in the Franklin to the Fort neighborhood, which is the most diverse neighborhood, and the only neighborhood with BIPOC communities in it. And I think that opportunity needs to be spread through all neighborhoods in Missoula, and the density needs to be spread through all neighborhoods in Missoula. We are one of the densest neighborhoods in town with the predominance of multifamily, and I think other neighborhoods need to share in that responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else this evening?
Thanks for being mayor, Mayor Davis.
You're welcome.
It's a hard job, thanks for being council people.
David, while you're finding your place, can we just make sure we have the spelling of your last name correct?
This is a prelude to February 5th, the meeting coming up. Max Wolf wants to rebuild the Old Post Hospital and add 30 high-end condos and an undisclosed amount of commercial development. Quote, "Our plan is simple, a limited commercial and residential development coupled with beautification and expansion of open space accessible to the public showcasing the Old Post Hospital." Between 1908 and 1914 Congressman Joseph Dixon allocated $1 million to build Fort Missoula and the Old Post Hospital. Fort Missoula has a clay tile pipe gravity system which drains to a main pipe 10 feet away from the tributary of the Bitter River on a 50-degree slope. This is a repairing area below the Old Post. The entire Fort Missoula area has 109-year-old clay sewer pipes with a 50-year life expectancy. At the end of this sewer system by the river, at the corner of Lieutenant Moss Road and General Foster Avenue is the pumping grinder station. This pumps sewage through a force main installed at the same time. It is a clay tile and runs above the sewer main at the river level. Then it goes behind Old Post through a private country club golf course, and through Larchmont Golf Course, and ties to the Reserve Street Sewer at Dixon Avenue. This is a ticking time bomb. Huge trees have grown on top of the sewer main by the river. The city has to grind the roots on a regular basis to keep it clear. It is on a steep slope of shifting soil, and the rigid clay pipe can shift and leak. The manholes are brick and are caving in, are irreparable. The force main probably leaks too. All of the water mains at the fort area are very old and made of cast iron. This is one foot away from the Old Post. These pipe joints were typically lead-packed and designed to last 50 to 100 years. Leaky sewers, leaky water mains lead to contamination. The water at the fort needs to be rigorously tested by city and county health departments before anyone gets sick or gets lead poisoning. There are two old sewer mains running through the Old Post private property that would be under Maxwell's proposed condos along with a four-inch water main. There's not enough water at this, at that point for fire mitigation. The hydrogen sulfide odor by the Old Post from an manhole is awful. Fort Missoula needs to be demolished and all the infrastructure decommissioned. This city and county needs to put the transmission in reverse and start taking care of what we already have, and not going into overdrive and supplying thousands of houses for people who don't even live here and haven't paid into the system for 40 years like me. The Old Post Hospital is 110 years old, has not been maintained for 50 years. In my opinion, it's a very ugly building that shouldn't be rebuilt. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else tonight? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody else in the room. Ms. Trimble, is there anybody online? Looks like we have somebody there. All right. Ms. Sherrill's got somebody unmuted there? Okay.
Yes, Matt Larson, more three. I wanted to speak to the greater housing issue at large, and how it intersects with vacation rentals or temporary vacation homes, and that also intersects with this, any new development, all these new developments are allocating a certain amount to be rentals or tourist homes or both. And if we keep on allocating a bunch of new housing to be just tourist homes, that's definitely stuff that's not gonna be made for people that are community members. And that's why we need to implement a ban similar to, which really isn't a complete ban, it's just more regulation and oversight to the tourist homes that are already in place and all future tourist homes, because sometimes they're allocated up to like 30% of all new development. And it's ridiculous that we would be creating that much new development for strictly tourism, and during a housing crisis no less. I see that the city has spent another $12,000 to identify all the addresses for the tourist homes. I'll be commenting on that later. That's through Granicus, which has done a previous study, which the city commissioned for $12,000, but the city really needs to take action on stuff like this, because they've yet to issue a single ticket, as far as I know, to any illegal tourist homes. So they've just been bringing people into compliance, and we need to, we need to have better compliance in general. I think we have maybe 25% of what's out there registered in this, with the city. So we definitely need to do better with this. If we're gonna continue forth and have developments allocate up to 30% of their new housing to be these type of tourist homes, yet, you know, we only have 25% of these existing tourist homes even in compliance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else online? Doesn't look like it. Okay, great. Thanks, everybody, for your public comments this evening. We'll go ahead and move on then to agenda item number four, which is announcing committee meetings, committee membership appointments, and changes to committee agendas. So we'll start with the city clerk, Ms. Trimble, would you go ahead? Or do we have Annalise Brown that's gonna be taking it over tonight?
Hi, Mayor, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, it's all yours.
Right. Hopefully you can see my screen.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so starting at 10:00 AM, we have committee of the whole discussing the proposed changes to the city council meeting, agenda, and related council matters. And then following that, we have the proposed ceasefire resolution. Starting at 11:10, we have a budget and finance committee presenting on the BID garbage and recycling contract for '23 through '26. It'll be presented by our city clerk, Claire Trimble. At 11:30, climate conservation and parks committee will be presenting on referral for Clark Fork River Access and Restoration CIP project. That'll be presented by Parks and Rec. At 1:00 PM, public works and mobility committee will present on wastewater RASL replacement project. And that'll be followed at 1:20 by the land use planning committee, which will be presenting a referral to eliminate tourist homes as a permitted use in residential districts. And we will, that'll be presented by Daniel Carlino. We do not have committee meetings on January 31st. It'll be a fifth Monday of the month.
Wonderful, thank you, Ms. Brown, appreciate that. I think we're all wrapped up there? Great. All right. All right, seeing no other announcements for that, then we'll go ahead and we will move on to the consent agenda this evening. Items on the consent agenda were approved in city council committees to be placed on the consent agenda to save time at council meetings by voting on them as a package. The city clerk will read the list aloud, so citizens watching on MCAT will know what is on the consent agenda. We'll invite community comment on these items before we vote. So I believe that we're gonna say, Mrs. Brown, come on up.
Thank you. On our consent agenda tonight, we have accounts payable, claims for checks dated January 16th, 2024. We'll be ratifying accounts payable in the amount of $1,539,475.04. Next, we'll approve counts payable, claims for checks dated January 23rd, 2024, in the amount of $491,434.67. Following that, we'll approve and authorize the mayor to sign the development agreement between the city of Missoula and Western Farms Land Holdings LLC. 5.4, we have approved the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with Montana Forest Consultants for Forest Management Services on the Mountain Dean Stone Reserve, with an amount not to exceed $112,271.60. Item 5.5, we will set a public hearing on February 5th, 2024, to consider adopting a resolution approving the expenditure of up to $1 million of 2018 Open Space Fund funds for implementation of Phase 1 Clark Fork River Access and Restoration Project. Item 5.6, we will approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Second Amendment to the West End Right-of-Way Agreement. Item 5.7, we'll award the bid for the East Beckwith Water Main Replacement Project to Three Rivers Land Works LLC, at a cost not to exceed $832,698.75, and authorize the return of bid bonds. Item 5.8, recommended motion to approve and authorize the mayor to assign amendment number one to South Fourth Street Water Main Replacement with Ibankport, at a cost not to exceed $93,180. Item 5.9, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the street maintenance agreement between the city of Missoula and the Montana Department of Transportation for the fiscal years 2024 and 2025. Item 5.10, the recommended motion is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign track out-of-service agreements with Montana Rail Link for the city of Missoula to remove existing railroad grade crossings at the following locations: South First Street West, South Third Street West, South Fourth Street West, South Fifth Street West, South Sixth Street West, Knoll Street, South Fourteenth Street West, North Avenue West, South Avenue West, Mary Avenue, McDonnell Avenue, 39th Street, and Miller Creek Road. Item 5.11, we'll adopt and authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement between Powell County, Mineral County, city of Missoula, Missoula County, Granite County, Butte, Silver Bow County, for the purposes of applying for a 2024 RACE planning grant to conduct feasibility and conceptual design of a cross-county trail linking Butte to Idaho along the Great American Rail Trail. Item 5.12, we'll adopt and authorize the mayor to approve the memorandum of agreement between Missoula Urban Transportation District and the city in order to update the long-range transportation plan. Item 5.13, we'll approve and award for bid for the MoMOT #2 lift station replacement, Harlequin Court Water Main Extension Project, to Prospect Construction, Inc., at a cost not to exceed $2,957,994.25, and authorize the return of bid bonds. Item 5.14, we'll approve and authorize the mayor to sign a new five-year collective bargaining agreement with the operating engineers of wastewater collections union. And 5.15, we'll authorize, we'll approve and authorize the mayor to sign a new five-year collective bargaining agreement with the Montana Federation of Public Employees, Public Works Engineering Employees Association.
Well done, Ms. Brown, that was quite the list. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, excellent. All right, is there any public comment this evening on items on the consent agenda? Any of those 15, you're welcome to come and comment on. Not seeing any in the room, do we have Mr. Larson online? All right, Mr. Larson, when you're ready.
Yes, Matt Larson, more three. In the second accounts payable, you'll see an annual charge, I guess, from Granicus for $12,000. Now the city has all the tools that it needs, it is identifying all the addresses of all the vacation rentals, and it can send a postcard, it can do whatever it needs to do to collect all the registration fees from these users of these amenities, or providers of these amenities in our community. I personally saw one reported, if the minimum fine of $25 was assessed to the one that I reported, it would have, it would have caused a $9,000 fine to be incurred onto this property. So, I mean, we could definitely generate revenue with some of these if they needed to be coerced into compliance. I don't think that we do need to, like, be strong-arming members of the community to be compliant, but obviously something needs to be done. And they are public accommodations, so they should be inspected, and they should, by the health department, and there should be fees that are increased, and I think we should pay attention to Mr. Carlino's committee agenda item this coming week regarding the ban of these units in residential areas, because I think it does make sense for providing some, some housing and doing something during a housing crisis to provide housing to community members. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Brown, is there anyone else online that wishes to make public comment for the consent agenda?
Not that I see, Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you, Ms. Sherrill. All right, great. Thanks, everybody, that concludes agenda item number five, the consent agenda. And item number six is comments from city staff, city agencies, community forum, neighborhood councils, boards, commissions, or authorities. Oh, my gosh.
Mayor, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, but we should-
Sorry, I just moved right on.
-on the consent agenda.
I even wrote down vote, geez. Thank you, backing up. We need, we need a vote, we've been doing, we've been doing roll call vote, and so we'll go ahead and we'll continue to do roll call vote tonight. Ms. Brown, go right ahead.
Thank you. One second.
I was just so excited to get you on.
Voting on the consent agenda, Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Daniel Carlino?
Yes.
Sierra Farmer?
Yes.
Kristen Jordan?
Yes.
Eric Nelson?
Yes.
Mike Nugent?
Yes.
Jennifer Savage?
Yes.
Amber Sherrill?
Yes.
Sandra Basica?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Brown. All right, now we'll move on to item number six, and I don't believe we have any special presentations this evening. So we'll move on to agenda item number seven. That is special presentations and proclamations. That's what we'll be moving on to next. You bet. All right. So, I thought I would give a little context here. This is the first proclamation that I'll be reading in as mayor, and while the city has signed on to some joint proclamations with the Board of County Commissioners recently, including our acknowledgement of Martin Luther King Jr. Day, we haven't had any proclamations come forward in the last several meetings. So I thought it would just be helpful to mention for the public that almost all proclamations come to the mayor's office at the request of residents who wish to raise awareness of issues in the community, or to state or recognize achievements. There are some times, proclamations are mayor-initiated. They often recognize a day or a month, like Parks and Recreation Month, for example, or World Refugee Day. The city of Missoula has pretty much always done them, and, and we've done these for years and years. The mayor may decide to modify or deny a request for a proclamation at his or her discretion, which is similar to the practices of other cities. So I thought I would just give some context for folks here and our two new council members as well. So today, we have a proclamation being brought forward, We the People Amendment Day, and this is being brought forward by Montanans Move to Amend, which is a statewide nonprofit, nonpartisan group of Montanans who work to educate about the need for a constitutional amendment that would allow Montanans to limit the role of money and corporations in our elections, returning to the level playing field Montana had had for 100 years before the Supreme Court's decision, Citizens United decision of 2010. And then this group is affiliated with the National Move to Amend. It's worth noting that this proclamation has been read into the record since 2016, but it was not brought forward last year in 2023. So 2016, 2017, 2018, 19, 20, 21, and 22, it's been read here at city council chambers. So with that, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation now. Whereas on November 8th, 2011, 74.67% of Missoula voters passed referendum 7653 urging our state and federal elected officials to amend the United States Constitution to state that corporations are not human beings. And whereas on November 6th, 2012, 74.9% of Montana voters passed Initiative 166 asserting that people of Montana regard money as property, not speech, and that the people of Montana regard the rights under the United States Constitution as rights of human beings, not rights of corporations, and called for a United States constitutional amendment. And whereas the well-being of Missoula citizens is harmed with each passing year, that the constitutional amendment is delayed as our common good and our common wealth is being redirected to benefit the few. And whereas, the money that is overwhelming our elections and intimidating our candidates and elected officials makes it more and more difficult for the citizens of Missoula to protect the common good and our common wealth. And whereas, Missoula wishes to give evidence of our commitment every year until the United States Constitution is amended, amended, amended to say that corporations are not people, and money is not speech, and the proposed We the People Amendment most clearly states our intent. Now therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the city of Missoula in the state of Montana, do hereby proclaim January 22nd, 2024 as We the People Amendment Day. Now, I think there are a few people in the audience that do wish to speak to this proclamation, and I'll go ahead and invite you up now. Thank you. And please, keep comments to three minutes, and civil and respectful, please, please state your name and spell it for the record. Thanks so much.
Well, thanks very much, Mayor Davis. I didn't know that other people could speak, so if you want to, please feel free.
And if we have a lot of people here for one, you're, we're welcome to just ask people to stand if you would go to join you in that. Please say your, say your name, please.
Can you hear me okay? I have, I have kind of a soft voice usually.
Yes, we can.
Oh, good. So thank you, Mayor Davis, for continuing the annual proclamation that Mira Engen also brought forward each year, and for the opportunity to say a few words.
And your name, your name, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sue Kirchmeyer.
Thank you.
Before I begin, would the people who are here to show their support, please stand? Okay, thanks a lot. We're here from many parts of the community, and as I said, I'm here from, Sue Kirchmeyer from Montanans Move to Amend. Many who are here, and yourselves, you guys can sit if you want. It's pretty forceful, okay. Many people who are here and there can remember how immediately obvious it was that we needed a constitutional amendment to put the US Supreme Court's reasoning back on track after the 2010 Citizens United decision. Indeed, there was a groundswell of indignation in Missoula and across the state for how carelessly the court dismissed, how crucial our 100 years of success in limiting money and corporations in our elections, and protecting our level playing field was then and continued to be. My own immediate feelings at the time are fresh in my mind of being trapped, of feeling checkmated, that there was no way forward if we played by the Supreme Court's new rules. Of course, over the last 14 years, those rules have impacted and stressed our communities because of the money and power that drowns out our voices from reaching our lawmakers. In contrast, when our community takes the time for this proclamation every year, it reminds us how lucky we are to live in a community that commits to a level playing field, not just in our elections, but in our whole community. It strengthens my resolve, and hopefully it strengthens yours too, to work for the good of all. A level playing field is crucial, it gives us resilience, so that when we disagree, it still keeps us coming back to work out our differences. In Missoula, we have shown that we have our own way of doing this. We reclaimed our air, we rescued our water. Now look at how well-prepared we are to protect our ag land, our housing. We're no stranger to strong market forces. And when we figure it out, then we can collaborate with neighboring counties, with other towns who face the very same challenges that we're facing. And furthermore, we're not alone. Nationally, there have been hundreds of resolutions that have followed Missoula's, and amending the Constitution is gaining ground, gaining ground, because more people are questioning the motives and the reasoning of the US Supreme Court. So our families, our neighborhoods, our farms, our businesses, they all rely on our promise to preserve a level playing field with all voices heard, no matter what the nation and the state challenges with. And this proclamation is a promise, so thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kurt Smucker, appreciate your comments. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Well, we had quite a few people in the audience stand, is there anybody else that wishes to speak, or? Okay, thank you. There's one online, thank you. Thank, thank you, councillor Carlino. All right, someone online, wanna go ahead?
Yeah, you can.
Sorry, I'm operating with one screen, so I can hardly, thanks, councillor.
Jan, Jan, that would be you online, if you could unmute yourself.
Go ahead, we're ready for you. Go ahead, we're ready for you. She's unmuted. Jan, can you hear us? Your hand is raised. There is a button that you can unmute there. All right.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, sorry for that. Yeah, my name is Jan Van Riper. It's V.A.N.R.I.P.E.R. I just want to stand or sit or whatever I'm doing in agreement with this amendment. It's one of the most important things I think we can do as citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Glad that you were able to get on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Okay, great. We'll go ahead then and move on from item number seven, and glad that so many of you stayed with us. Thank you. All right. Sorry? Oh, yes. Counselor Basika, please.
So this is incredibly uncomfortable for me, but since I caused a fuss, I over emailed yesterday, I might as well follow through with that. I am not in support of this proclamation. I am uncomfortable with it because the weight of changing the basis of our country, our United States Constitution, is huge. And a corporation is to make sure that business actions will not illegally impact the individual's assets. Corporations are made of people. And given the political divide-ness that has happened in the past few years, in the past decade, it would be ill-informed for someone to put their whole name and family name on the line when making an outcry if they're against the establishment. So, that being said, I rarely find myself in agreeance with the ACLU, but I'm going to quote these words from their website because I agree with them on this matter. Quote, "Any rule that requires the government to determine what political speech is legitimate and how much political speech is appropriate is difficult to reconcile with the First Amendment. Our system of free expression is built on the premise that the people get to decide what speech they want to hear. It is not the role of the government to make that decision for them," end quote. And I guess, to put things, because I could go on and on about this, but the ACLU and I, I guess, see eye to eye on this one, and we are both not in support of this proclamation. And I know this is not a voting matter, and I'm really happy that everyone came down to voice their opinions because that is what democracy is for. So thank you all for coming down. I just wanted to politely disagree with this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basika. All right. Looking around the horseshoe? Any other comments? Okay, great. Thank you all very much. We'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item, which is agenda item number eight. That is, item number eight is final consideration. Items listed under final consideration have had a public hearing. The chairperson of the standing city council committee will make a motion. We invite community comment on each item. So the first item is 8.1. This is building permit fee schedule. And Kirsten Hands, I see that you have joined us as the staff member, and I was just, do you have any additional information? And also, thank you. I see Walter Banziger is also on. Thank you both. Is there additional information that you'd like to share with council or the public this evening?
Yes, we do. We've modified our presentation to elaborate on some of the questions that were brought up in our previous presentation. So I'm going to give a brief overview, and we'll look at a couple of slides. Oh, yeah, first of all, I'm Kirsten Hands. I'm the Business and Finance Manager for Community Planning Development and Innovation. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. All right, I think I've got it open?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so the attached resolution that we've been bringing forward to the council reflects an increase to the CPDI Building Fee Schedule, which is consistent with Montana Code Annotated 50.60.1062G. The Development Services Division of CPDI is requesting an inflationary increase in the amount of 7% on all building, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and demolition permit fees, as well as plan review fees, moving permits, reinspection fees, and reactivation fees. This increase is solely on the building division fee schedule, which is tied to the building fund in CPDI. The building division is self-funded through the building permit fees. So the fees on the building schedule have not been increased in 12 years, and the requested 7% increase mirrors the standard increase in service fees across the city. We put this graph together at a request that shows the compounded inflation rate since 2012, which was the last time that we increased the fee schedule. And here you can see how inflation has risen since then and how our fee schedule has remained static. And even if we do adopt this resolution and approve the 7% increase, you can see that gap between where we will be and where inflation has taken us over the last 12 years. And we've also put this table together that's more of a representation of what's been happening with our fund balance. So state law previously had allowed us to keep up to 12 months of reserves in our building reserve account. State law changed at the last legislative session, and we can now keep 36 months of reserves. You can see with this table, the operating budget is in the first column. I've surrounded that with a box because it's kind of separate from everything else that we're looking at. That operating budget is just what we need to keep the division running for the year. The next column over is our beginning fund balance, and our fund balance again is our reserves, and that is brought forward from the previous year. We then have a column that shows what our building permit revenues have been each year, and also what our fiscal year expenditures have been each year. And then our ending fund balance, which ends up being the beginning fund balance for the next fiscal year. We've also put in a column here to show the variance between our revenues and expenditures. And you can see from 2016 to 18, we were still running in the black, but in 2019, we took a pretty good hit, and we were running in the red, and that brought down our fund balance. In 2021, we just had a modest in the black, but the last two years, we have been in the red. We have been expending more than we've been bringing in with permit revenue. And in 2023, you can see how that's a pretty large amount. It's almost $500,000. Please remember that in 2023 is when we took some of the software that we use, like a sell-up, which used to be funded partially by our general fund, and we brought it completely into the building fund. So there were additional expenditures that we covered completely by the building fund, which has increased that variance and increased our expenditures. The next column just shows what our average budgeted monthly expenditures are, and we were using that amount to calculate how many months we have in our fund reserve. And you can see that that's steadily gone down to where, right now, in 2024, we only have six months of fund reserves left. State law now allows us up to 36 months, and these reserves are what will continue to fund the division in the instance of economic downturn, or when we don't have enough revenue coming in to cover our expenditures, which is why we want to increase our reserve fund, and we need to start bringing our fee schedule in line with inflation so that we can make up that difference. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and turn the presentation over to Walt, and he's going to cover some of the bullet dots that he has communicated with the council. So Walt?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for allowing us to bring this presentation to your attention. My name is Walter Banziger. I'm the Deputy Director of Development Services for the City of Missoula. So a couple of points that we want to reiterate, and some of these you've heard before, and some will be new, is the building permit fees are governed by Montana Code Annotated MCA and the administrative rules of Montana. The city's building operation is certified by the Department of Labor through its building code program. All the fees that are collected by the department are related to the inspection, building permits, and code enforcement operations of the city. The building department is fully funded by these fees. An annual report is provided to the State of Montana every year to ensure that the way we spend these fees are associated with building code and permit processes. Comparable Montana municipalities each use a form of valuation method to determine their building permit fees for new construction. Essentially, this means that we take the building type, the occupancy, and the square footage, and then we plug that into a recognized table to determine a value for the construction. This value is then assessed against the permit fee schedule, which we are asking for an increase to. The table that the City of Missoula uses is from 2009 for the valuation, and the permit fee schedule is from 2012. We have not increased those since the 2012 year. All comparable Montana municipalities have higher building permit fees than Missoula. These range from 36% for Missoula County to 129% for Helena over Missoula values. We did a survey of these permits. We utilized Missoula County and Billings. Both of those were at 36%. Bozeman and Great Falls were about 64% higher, and Helena, again, 129%. All of these municipalities use more current recognized tables, such as the ICC, or ICC stands for International Code Council Construction Values Data. And most of these municipalities charge 65% for plan review in addition to their building permit fees, where the City of Missoula charges a current 20%. For new construction, the City of Missoula's permit valuation fee has remained static since 2012 and has not increased with inflation or with market rates or construction costs since, again, 2012, which is shown in Kirsten's table. Next slide, please. The building permit review times have remained static for the past five years. We have done a study that has reviewed our building permit review times. I know there is a perception in the community that these have increased or have delayed since COVID, but we look back at since 2018, and our permit review times have remained about six to eight weeks for a residential permit and 10 to 12 weeks for a commercial permit. This is relatively consistent with most major municipalities in terms of a timeframe. The building fund, as Kirsten has mentioned, has taken on annual expenditures related to the management of the operations of the SLA software system. This expense was previously carried by the city's general fund, and it has now been rolled over as of last year to the building fund. This includes the annual licenses and the annual operation and maintenance fees that are expected to increase by contract at 3% per year over the next five years, until the contract is up for negotiation and renewed again. Expenses, along with inflationary increases in operation expenses over the last two years, have taxed the building fund reserves, and this is evident in the table that Kirsten has shared with you. As she also has mentioned, new state legislation passed in 2023 session allows us to increase our building fund reserves to a 36-month reserve against operation expenses. This is to ensure that we are able to maintain the current service levels and improve service levels that we have been providing should the market change, and it also allows us to maintain staff and all our programs that we are providing currently. The city is looking to modestly increase the current building permit fee schedule by 7%. As I mentioned, we did a comparison to other municipalities. Ours are significantly lower. Our increase of 7% equates to an approximately $145 increase to permit fees for a typical 2,000, 5,000-square-foot, single-family residence. We did an analysis. Our current fee versus the 7% increase results in simply a $145 increase over the previous fees. Next slide, please, and Kirsten, back to you.
The motion that we have for this evening is to adopt a resolution of the Missoula City Council amending the building permit fee schedule by applying a 7% increase to the fees included in the schedule, as noted on Exhibit A of the resolution, and making it effective February 1, 2024. And that is our presentation. If you have any questions.
Thank you both very much. All right, are there any council questions this evening? Okay. Not seeing any questions from council. Now, we already do have a motion on the floor, but we're going to go ahead and clarify that. So if you would not mind, we have the chair for the Budget and Finance, and that would be Counselor Sherrill. Would you go ahead and make a motion, please?
Yeah, thanks. I recommend that we adopt a resolution of the Missoula City Council amending the building permit fee schedule by applying a 7% increase to the fees included in the schedule, as noted on Exhibit A of this resolution, effective February 1, 2024.
All right, oh, great. All right, thank you, Ms. Sherrill. Are there any public comment on the motion on this agenda item? Come on up.
My name is Gene Mosted with Mosted Construction. I'm here to talk not so much about the fee, but about the process of the building department in getting permits. I don't agree with their valuation that six to eight weeks is an acceptable timeframe for permits. They're looking back in five years. Years ago, we were just as busy as we are now, and we used to get them in two weeks. So I did a little research on that. And if you go to the Billings website and look up under fees, they have a thing, a question and answer thing, and you can ask, "How long does it take to get a billing permit fee?" And in Billings, they state on their website that you can get a permit in four to seven days. And I have someone here from Billings that built over 100 houses there last year to state to you that he got his permits within a week. And I guess my question to the council is, we hear all of this, and it was a nice report, but there was nothing about the efficiencies of the department, and what are they working on to bring down the timeframes? Because Missoula does have the highest timeframes to get a building permit in the state of Montana. Helena is two weeks. And Billings does more permits than we do, and you can get them in a week. So obviously, there's something going on with efficiency in Missoula that we need to work on. But I would like to invite Brad McCall, who has McCall Builders in Billings, just to give you a little statement on what they do in Billings. Brad now lives in Missoula, wants to do some building here, and they are building in Helena, so he knows the Helena stuff. So please welcome Brad McCall.
Thank you, Mr. Mosted. Mr. McCall?
Hello, my name's Brad McCall. I am a new resident of Missoula. I've been a home builder for about 20 years, and I build with my family in Billings, but we also now build in Helena, and we hope to build here in Missoula this year. The only permit I pulled here in Missoula was for a personal home for me, a remodel, and it took about six months. And there was a lot of, you know, there were some corrections that needed to be done. There was a setback issue that I didn't understand, but that was kind of a big deal. I was kind of blown away, and I was going, well, maybe it's just this one time. But even six to eight weeks is a big deal in timeframes. When we're trying to bring, you know, more affordable housing, this is a critical issue. So I think really honestly, the assessment of what the fee needs to be is, and if Billings is 30% more, that's fine. That works in our budget. But what doesn't work is, you know, weeks and months. Because, you know, if you're trying to decide what the market needs, you know, another three months or, you know, six months doesn't work. You know, I mean, you're trying to, because it takes another six months to build the house, so you're trying to decide what the market will need a year from now. So it's just really, really critical if it could be made a priority to make that time faster. That would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome to Missoula.
I'll make it quick.
I'll make it quick. David Gray, GRAY, is an example of how this impacts our housing market. It took six months to get an eight-plex reviewed and approved by the building and zoning department, and during that time, it added $50,000 in cost. And so then they were going to do heat pumps in all the units. Those had to be stripped out to baseboard, electric. We had to put T-wax in the wall, which is a glorified through-wall air conditioning unit. And so like, all those units now are probably paying higher utility bills because it took so long for the zoning and building department to review, and there wasn't a bunch of submissions or anything like that. It was just dead slow, and no one seemed to think getting it reviewed in time was a priority. So it has been a huge issue since about 2019, so pre-pandemic. Just the overall speed of development services has just died to a crawl, and there just doesn't seem to be any desire to make it faster. So anything you could do would really help. It costs a lot of money, and it affects Missoula residents.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Gray.
By Moore, M-O-O-R-E. Listening to these developers and builders, all of their problems that supposedly the city council is costing them, I suggest that they use part of the 10% welfare payment that the MRI/MRA is making to give to them to put into their pockets. And they're up here worrying about these fees and stuff. I think it's a sad, sad nomenclature as to what is builders and corporate officers and so forth. You know the type of person that I'm speaking about that is coming from the taxpayers. I dare, I don't know these exact numbers, but I will bet anybody that the TIF money is probably the biggest item that is pure expense to people paying these payments they're making. I know one of our people running for mayor had ads on the TV, probably 500 of them, that he had some ideas of how to reduce the property taxes. I would like to suggest that he be allowed to do whatever his ideas are to reduce taxes on some of these people that can't pay it, can hardly do anything. I've said to you this week, week before, that my property taxes on the house went from, I think it's about double, if I remember correctly, about double. About double what you're letting this do. And I dare say, I'd be glad to make a presentation with the MRA and let you see exactly what the MRA is doing to this thing. I was down close to the shopping center, and they're building this, I don't know what it's going to be, concrete walls close to the shopping center. But I saw their big ad, "MRA gives them money."
Mr. Moore, your past three minutes, and we are on public comment related to this agenda item. Please wrap it up in 10 seconds.
That's all.
Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. Other public comments related to the agenda item, which is 8.1, building permit fee schedule. Okay. Not seeing any. Are there any council comments after public comment? Mr. Campbell? Mr. Campbell, then Mr. Nugent. Is that okay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I appreciate the information brought forth by staff on this. Very good presentation. And I do find some of the information on there concerning, particularly as it pertains to inflation, particularly over the past 10 years. And that graph did a good job illustrating that, but that's kind of a double-edged sword as I see it. We look at the cost of housing, the cost of building materials, so forth, for developers, particularly in recent history, has really driven up the price of housing, and that's a concern of mine. I think for building a housing is a concern of constituents of mine. That's why I'm here to represent. I also look at interest rates as they affect both people buying homes, but also developers, you know, purchasing land, purchasing materials, and the holding costs associated with that and the amount of time it takes to get building permits. And they have to have those holding costs, have those higher interest rates nowadays. Those are costs that gets passed on to potential homebuyers, and that's a concern. And I think, you know, at this point in time, you know, I think we may be seeing the start of, you know, a softening in the market with rental housing, with new home sales. You know, down the line, I think there might be opportunity as market softens, as people have more opportunity to get into market, people have more opportunity to get into rental housing, that, you know, this might be something that we could take a look at and revisit. But at this point in time, I cannot support this recommended motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Nugent, did you have a comment next?
I kind of have a question for staff, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
But I can do both, if you want.
No, you bet. They're ready for you.
I appreciate all the update, and I really do appreciate staff hearing our questions from the last time we discussed this and bringing forward good information to kind of update that. I also appreciate all the public comments on process. I really see them as two separate things. I have no problem with permits helping cover the expenses to review, you know, paying for themselves and part of that. So that makes sense, and I'm less concerned about an inflation adjustment there. I do think that some of the comments about the process are very relevant to the conversation, but maybe not to our vote tonight. So I kind of wonder, and Walter, I'm going to ask you, since you're on there unmuted, if it would be okay to get an LUP item scheduled soon to maybe discuss the process a little bit more, so council can better understand all that goes into reviewing a permit, who all sees it, and also maybe a little bit of comparison to other communities, so that we can maybe begin that sort of community discussion. Would that be all right?
That would. We certainly would be open to and value doing that. One of the things we are doing internally is constantly looking at our process and our procedures and looking ways to improve them. I do have to, it is, you know, there are things that we are required to do by state statutes, some are by city requirements, other are procedural. Procedural, of course, are quicker things that we can fix. Other things might take a little bit more time, but we're certainly always open to looking at these and improving them and finding ways to make the system better.
Sounds good. Well, I will circle back with you and the mayor and kind of discuss that a little bit more, and then we'll get that on the LUP agenda, because I do want to recognize the comments tonight and acknowledge that I think that's an important conversation for us to have.
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Appreciate that. Ms. Jordan, and then Ms. Anderson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Nugent. You kind of stole my thunder there, but that was my question as well, and I'm glad to hear that we'll be getting a presentation on it. But just real quickly, while we do have these folks in the audience here tonight, is there a reason why it takes longer in Missoula than it does in other towns across the state? Is there something specific to Missoula or Missoula County that is affecting the timelines for issuing permits that you can answer, you know, briefly, I guess, for now? What makes us so special, I guess?
Is that a question over to me, or?
Whoever wants to answer it. Thank you.
Yeah. Anecdotally, I would answer that question to say that Missoula and several, probably Bozeman have probably some of the more complex and detailed zoning and land use codes, as well as other codes, through things that have been adopted by the city. So that takes a little bit, is more complex probably than what you might find in places like Kalispell, but that's anecdotal. I think going to Mike's question, going back and researching what those exact are would be a good exercise. I know that I have had conversations with folks in Kalispell and other municipalities about how their process works and how they're getting things through faster. And one of the things is that they look at our code, and they say it's much more complex.
Okay, thank you for your question, and I'll just note for the, before we move on to Ms. Anderson and then Ms. Vasika, that that is an area that the council has embraced and directed the staff, and the staff have been working on a unified development code update. And so it'll be really helpful to have this conversation. But as a reminder, we are, as a city, working on a very comprehensive development code update, and so we look forward to being able to find those opportunities for greater efficiencies. All right, Ms. Anderson.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. Appreciate the questions from council members and the comments. It was literally as Mike was speaking, I had already started the email to Ms. Pahan to be like, hey, we're getting comments on this. Can we get a presentation to dive into a little bit more on this? So I think we are all curious on what it is that some of the issues that we are facing within our department in permitting. And, you know, I know that code reform is ongoing and it's complex, but I also, I think that it's important to recognize that earlier, or not, we are into New Year. So last year, we had to do several updates that were reflective of changes made at the legislature that we, you know, basically had to comply with state law and kind of, it almost compounded some of the things that we were working on because it wasn't done and incorporated in a holistic way. So I want to acknowledge that it is, there is no simple, easy answer. And in my six years on council, the Office of Development has never been dead slow. I think that they would all crave for a moment of where getting their workload done in a 40-hour, normal work week would be possible, but that is not the case. And we've had lots of turnover, and so I just feel like I had to take a moment to, you know, recognize the hard work of our staff. Everything can always be improved, but acknowledging the work that is done and that it is not something that we are just completely flippant to acknowledging. We all understand and have, all have personal stories about the housing crisis and how it affects our families, our loved ones, our constituents, and so we are not oblivious to this issue, but we also understand that there's no silver bullet. So I will be supporting these fees. I hope that in the future, we don't find ourselves in a situation where we go so long, we get ourselves into such a deficit. I don't feel like that that is a good way to run the railroad, but it is where we are now. And I do look forward to hearing the presentation on answering some of the questions that have been brought up. But in the meantime, I recognize that we have work to do and that these fees fund this office and that more has been asked of them with moving things out of the general fund. And so it is the right thing to do to allow them to have the funds necessary to actually perform their duties.
Thank you for your comments, Councilor Anderson. Appreciate that. Ms. Vasika, you're next, and then Ms. Becerra.
Thank you. So I reached out to a lot of folks from all ends of the spectrum. I reached out to former city employees. I reached out to developers. I reached out to homeowners. I reached out to realtors, because I am not an expert in this situation, and I don't want to say something or believe something that is incorrect. So with that being said, here are some of the comments that the people that I talked to said, and I'm not going to name anybody because of the previous proclamation earlier. So one person said, "Is this going to affect the return time and waiting time for inspections for speed of return time?" So that was addressed in the presentation, that building permit review times have remained static for the past five years at six to eight weeks. However, or for residential permits and 10 to 12 weeks for commercial permits. However, with some public testimony, that doesn't really seem to be the case. So that is a concern that I would like to discuss in the LUP meeting that we will have in the future. Another comment was, "Charges go to the end user if there was a noticeable change," or "if there's a noticeable change, then charges will go to the end user. It used to be two to three weeks, and now it's months." Another comment was, "Suppliers are getting into the rhythm of the increasing of the fees." Another comment, this is the last one, "Keep the builders at bay. Keep it tough for them. The builders will just pass it on to the public." And these are the comments from my constituents, from people of the city, people of the county that are trying to build in our city. And so I represent my constituents. Nobody I talked to, even people that I thought would disagree with me, because I call them because I want them to be the devil's advocate, like, "Why am I voting this way? You should tell, like, talk me out of it, please." And nobody could. So I have to be against it, and I'm really looking forward to the conversation, how we can streamline this.
All right, thank you, Ms. Vasika. Appreciate that. All right, Councilor Becerra.
Thank you. I just want to point out some information that was attached to this agenda item. I'm sure some, all of you have looked at it, but it says here that Bozeman's building permit fee is 64% higher than Missoula's proposed fee. Billings, 36% higher. Helena's is 129% higher. Great Falls, 64% higher. So, you know, I don't know if there's a correlation between higher fees and an expedited way of reviewing some of these permits, but I would really hope that maybe we can get that information in that presentation, the ratio of building permits versus staff capacity in some of these communities, to see if perhaps that's the route we need to take. I will be supporting it because I think that it's been a long time since we haven't done anything to increase our fees, and I think that we need to build and get to a place where our fees are producing the expediency that we're looking for in this CBDI. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you for your comments. Any other council comments this evening? All right, great. All right. Thank you, Chair Nugent. We will go ahead and make sure that we work with staff to get that referral in motion. And with that, then we'll go ahead and take a vote on this agenda item. So, Ms. Brown, you're on. All right, I'll see you there.
Thank you. Starting with Anderson.
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Campbell?
No.
No.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Sherrill?
Yes.
Vasika?
No.
That is eight yes and three no.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Brown. All right, that item passes. We'll move on to item 8.2.
Thank you.
Thank you, both. Thank you, Kirsten. Thank you, Walter. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it as well.
All right. Item 8.2 is fiscal year 2023 fourth quarter budget amendments. And do we have Lee Griffin here this evening to see if there's any updates from staff? Not seeing any. Looks like we don't have any staff updates this evening, which to me tells me we probably don't have any new information to bring forward. Okay, are there any questions from council on this item? Not seeing any? All right. We have likely already a motion on this item, but Counselor Sherrill, will you go ahead and read the recommended motion for 8.2, please?
Sure. I recommend that we adopt a resolution for the fourth quarter fiscal year 2023 amendments to the annual appropriations.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any public comment items on Agenda 8.2? Okay, not seeing any in the room. Any online? Okay, not seeing any? Great. Any council comments? You have a chance, next chance. Okay, great. Then we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Then we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote, Ms. Brown, when you're ready.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
I'm sorry, was that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Okay, that item passes unanimously. We'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 8.3. That is the referral and staff report for the Orchard Grove annexation in Major 24 Lot Subdivision. And so Laurel Stevens is a staff member that's joined us this evening. And Laurel, do you have any additional information that you'd like to share?
I don't have any new information from the LUP meeting, but I just wanted to note that the agenda does have the language of the updated recommended motions.
Thank you, Lauren. All right. Are there any questions from council on this agenda item? Okay, no questions from council? Then is there a motion to be made? Mr. Nugent, I realize that we already did make a motion on this, but we're going to go ahead and say it in for the record again this evening, so if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you, Mayor. You just want to hear me read a lot of language again.
Let us know if you need, you know, some water or something.
All right. To restate my motions, I move the City Council adopt a resolution to annex the subject property legally described as portion of Lot 42 of Cobden and Dismore's Orchard Homes Number One, located in the southeast one-fourth of Section 19, Township 13 North, Range 19 West, Missoula County, Montana, shown on Exhibit B, and zone upon annexation to RT 5.4 residential 5.4 two-unit townhouse, subject to the conditions of approval based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law on the staff report as amended by the City Council. I further move that the City Council approve the variance request from Article 3, Section 3-020.5A of the City Subdivision Regulations, which prohibits cul-de-sacs, loop and circle streets and turnarounds, and dead-end streets to allow Magnolia Drive, a proposed home zone woofer street, to connect to Larkin Wood Drive in two locations, resulting in a looped street based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law on the staff report as amended by the City Council. I further move that the City Council approve the variance request from Article 3, Section 3-020 Table Point 2A of the City Subdivision Regulations for Larkin Wood Drive, which does not meet the required 47-foot right-of-way width and is proposed to have a seven-foot-wide curbside sidewalk with no boulevard adjacent to the subject property, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law on the staff report as amended by the City Council. And I further move the City Council approve the Orchard Grove subdivision preliminary plat application, subject to the recommended conditions of approval based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law on the staff report as amended by the City Council.
Well done. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Is there any public comment on any of the recommended motions this evening? Come on up.
Robert Dunlop, D-U-N-L-O-P, and I live in Missoula. Am I correct that when your staff presented this earlier this month, they said that the future homeowners would be sent on notice, that they had to pay a certain amount into the irrigation district? Is this, is this the episode?
Mr. Dunlop, you can direct that question to me, and I'll ask Lauren if you would go ahead and answer that question. Did you hear Mr. Dunlop's question, Lauren?
Yeah, so the irrigation district, I guess I didn't really touch on the fees for that in my presentation, but those parcels in an irrigation district are subject to assessment that's outside of what, kind of what I was looking at with the subdivision report, but it might have been that the notice about just the homeowners that will be using and maintaining the woofer, having that be split, but I'm not quite sure.
Okay, thank Mayor for having me.
You're welcome.
I'll address that issue separately and not talk about your current motion.
Motion? Okay. Great. And thank you. This is the opportunity for public comment on these, on this agenda item this evening. So any other public comment this evening on Agenda 8.3? Okay, no, none in the room? Any online?
Not that I see.
Okay, great. All right, then, we've heard public comment. Is there any council comment before we take a vote? Yes, Ms. Vasika.
I guess I have a question. From Mr. Dunlop's comments, I am concerned, will neighboring homeowners be responsible for any sidewalk payments?
Lauren, can you answer Ms. Vasika's question?
I mean, all of the new infrastructure that'll be adjacent to this subdivision will be paid for and installed by the subdivider. I know that engineering has the RSID waivers that they put in. I'm not entirely sure how that all works, but all of the new infrastructure will be the responsibility of the subdivider.
Okay, that's how I originally understood it. So based on that response, I will be in support.
Okay, great. Thank you for your clarifying question. Appreciate that. Any other council questions? All right, great. Ms. Brown, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote on Items 8.3.
Would you like to take them all together?
Mr. Nugent, is that okay if we take them all together?
It's absolutely fine with me.
Okay, great. Looks like we have.
Okay, starting with Anderson.
Yes.
Sorry. Becerra?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
All right, great. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thanks, everybody. 8.3 passes. We'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is public hearings. State law and City Council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report on each item, the City Council and the mayor invite community comment. City Council holds a public hearing and then votes the following week unless there is a requirement for final action on the night of the public hearing, and that is the case with Item 9.1. Will we be taking a vote this evening on the item of 1200 Shakespeare Street, a tavern conditional use request? And so we have Zoe Walters here to present this evening.
All right. Hello, everyone. Can everyone hear me and see my screen?
We sure can.
All right, great. All right, so my name is Zoe Walters. I'm an associate planner in community planning, development, innovation, and Development Services has received a conditional use request from David Gray of DVG Architecture and Planning on behalf of the Westside Theater to add tavern use to the existing Westside Theater located at 1200 Shakespeare Street, Suite 2. And today's presentation is for public hearing and final consideration. A conditional use is a use that requires case-by-case review to determine if it is appropriate, given the context of the site and request. City Council is authorized to review and take action to approve, approve with modifications or conditions, or deny the conditional use based on the review criteria of Title 20 and with regard to public comment and agency comment. Conditional use applications may be approved when counsel, approved by counsel only when they determine that the review criteria as applicable has been satisfied. All of the applicable review criteria must be addressed in council's findings of fact in support of their decision. Uses that require conditional use approval may be approved by council when they determine that the use, that the proposed use is, one, in the interest of the public convenience and will not have significant adverse impact on the neighborhood or community; two, will not impede the orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties for uses permitted in the district; three, has operating characteristics that are compatible with the surrounding area in terms of hours of operation, outdoor lighting, noise, and traffic generation; four, will not have significant adverse impact on traffic safety or comfort, including all modes of transport, non-motorized and motorized, and will be functional and safe in terms of pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular access, parking, loading, and servicing; five, is in accordance with the growth policy and other relevant adopted plans; six, that the site properly addresses open space, light, and protection of natural features; and seven, that the, that uses are compatible with adjacent properties and uses in terms of physical elements such as open space design, screening and buffering, any applicable use-specific standards, and any other elements considering, considered important by City Council. So the subject property is located at 1200 Shakespeare Street, just west of Scott Street. The subject property is zoned M1R2 limited industrial residential. According to Title 20, a tavern use requires conditional use approval to operate in the M1R2 zoning district. M1R2 zoning is located to the south, east, and west, and unzoned land for the Montana rail link tracks is located to the north. The subject property's land use destination is neighborhood mixed use. This area is intended to distinguish, create, maintain, and enhance areas that provide local service within a neighborhood. Commercial uses that may be a part of the neighborhood mixed-use area include offices, entertainment, professional services, eating and drinking, and shopfront retail that serve a market at a small neighborhood scale. Medium-high density residential development is also encouraged in this area. The use of the subject property and surrounding uses are compatible with the land use destination outlined in the growth policy. The subject parcel contains one commercial building with five tenant suites. Existing businesses include business equipment sales and service, building maintenance service, car cleaning service, sports recreation participant, and Westside Theater, which is classified as entertainment and spectator sports, small venue. The proposed tavern conditional use, along with Westside Theater, will be contained within one tenant suite of the existing commercial building. No building additions are proposed. The theater foreplan provided in the application packet demonstrates that there are 56 seats within the Westside Theater. The Title 20 parking requirement for theaters is one space per four seats. The Westside Theater's parking requirement is 14 spaces. The theater use is already existing and is not considered in this conditional use request. Only the tavern use is to be reviewed. The total parking requirement for the entire building includes, including all uses, is 67 spaces. There is an existing parking deficit on-site. 14 parking spaces exist on-site, and there are 42 on-street parking spaces, which do not count towards the on-site parking requirements. The existing businesses have been previously permitted based on the 110% change-of-use credit, and the on-street parking helps to mitigate this deficit. Title 20 zoning code states when the use of property changes, additional off-street parking spaces must be provided to serve the new use only when the number of parking spaces required for the new use exceeds by more than 10% the number of spaces required for the lawful use that most recently occupied the building, based on the standards of the zoning ordinance. In other words, a 110% credit will be given to the most recent lawful use of the property for the number of parking spaces that would be required under the zoning ordinance, regardless of whether such spaces are actually provided. The Title 20 parking requirement for tavern use is one space per four seats, plus one space per two employees, plus one space per billiard table, plus one space per two gambling machines. The addition of the tavern use will not include billiard tables, gambling machines, or additional seating. The tavern use will require two additional employees, and a total of one parking space is required for the new proposed tavern use. No additional car parking is required to be installed in order to permit the tavern use due to the 110% credit. Bike parking is not triggered, however, bike parking compliance will be reviewed for, at the time of building permit, per the recommended conditional, condition of approval. Oops, sorry, skipped a slide there. Okay, so revisiting the conditional use review criteria, staff conclude that the use is in the interest of public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the neighborhood or community. The proposed tavern use provides an additional service as part of the theater in a mixed-use neighborhood. The parking requirement for existing and proposed uses are met. Proposed tavern use will not impede the orderly development and improvements of the surrounding properties for uses permitted in the district. Alcohol has been served through a catering company at Westside Theater for several years without adverse effects. The current operations of Westside Theater will not be impacted, and the conditional use does not include addition, additions or changes to the site. Three, the proposed tavern use has operating characteristics that are compatible with the surrounding area in terms of hours of operation, outdoor lighting, noise, and traffic generation. The proposed tavern use will not impact the current operations of the Westside Theater or other businesses on-site. Westside Theater has been serving alcohol at events through a catering company, and this request is to serve their own alcohol. The addition of the tavern use should not result in changes in terms of hours of operation or noise. The number of theater seats is not increasing. The number of employees will increase by two for the tavern use, and the parking requirement will increase by one. Traffic impacts will not be affected. Four, the proposed tavern use will not have a significant adverse impact on traffic safety or comfort, including all modes of transport, and will be functional and safe in terms of pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular access, parking, loading, and servicing. Vehicular access does not conflict with pedestrian or bicycle access to the site. There will be no changes to the existing parking or pedestrian routes. Bike racks are provided on-site in compliance with the zoning code. Five, the proposed tavern use is in accordance with the growth policy and other relevant adopted plans. The proposed tavern use complies with the neighborhood mixed-use land use destination, which calls for commercial uses, including entertainment and eating and drinking establishments. Six, the site properly addresses open space, light, and protection of natural features. This is an existing site, and no changes are proposed to the height or footprint of the building. There are no significant natural features on-site. And seven, the proposed tavern use is compatible with adjacent properties and uses in terms of physical elements such as other, other commercial and light industrial buildings. And with that, staff recommend approval of the tavern conditional use request located at 1200 Shakespeare Street in accordance with Missoula City Zoning Ordinance Title 20, Sections 2015, 20D, 2085, 70, and 20105, 40I2, based on the findings of fact in the staff report and subject to one condition of approval. One, the tavern conditional use at 1200 Shakespeare Street shall comply with all applicable portions of the Title 20 zoning code. Plans submitted at the time of building permit application shall substantially conform to the plans submitted at the time of conditional use review, subject to review and approval by Development Services prior to building permit approval. And that concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions. And again, this item is for final consideration tonight and requires a vote from council.
Great. Thank you for that clarification, Zoe. I appreciate that. Seeing the applicants representative in the room, would you care to speak to anything in addition? More than welcome to come on up.
Madam Mayor and councilpeople, thank you. Nice to see you again. My name is Kellie Boma, K-E-L-L-Y, B as in boy, O-U-M as in mother, A. And I am the managing director of the Westside Theater. I spoke a couple of weeks ago to you. I just wanted to bring up one more note that I didn't really mention. The license we are applying for is through the state, and it's a nonprofit arts venue beer and wine license. And I just wanted to say this for the public as well. This is a license that the Mam has, the Roxy, the Zach, so we're kind of falling in line with our fellow arts organizations. And the revenue stream that comes from serving alcohol from our own license helps us significantly with the other programs that we provide for the arts and greater community of Missoula. And I also wanted to note, because there was public comment that came in from an email a couple of weeks ago, this license is, we have to renew it every year. It also only goes with our organization, so if and when we leave Suite 2 on 1200 Shakespeare, it's not transferable. So anyone who is coming into the space, the zoning or whatever you decide does follow through, but the license would go with us. So, thank you.
Thank you for those clarifications, and thank you for your comments, Ms. Boma.
David Gray with DVG Architects. So it sounds like tavern use is pretty extreme to some people in there, but that is the only use the zoning code allows because they only use the zoning code allows because they don't sell food, per se. They have liquor, and they sell tickets to the show, and tickets to the show can't be included in the calculation to decide whether it's similar to a restaurant or a tavern. And so, it's through zoning that it has to be the tavern, but the other, the Roxy, Zach, they're in the similar boat, and so they were also approved with council. But I did want to make it clear, you know, it's not Keenan machines, it's not billiards, it's not that type of use, it's just beer and wine. Thank you.
Thank you for that educational moment. Appreciate that clarification. Thank you. All right, great. So, are there any questions from council this evening? Yes, Mr. Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I might have missed it. What are the actual hours of operation for your tavern, and are they the same as the timeframe of your service of alcohol?
Ms. Boma, would you mind answering that, please?
So, currently, we offer performances generally in the evening time, usually with a start time at 7:30, sometimes for a 2 o'clock matinee on the weekends, Saturday and Sundays. So, generally, we open the bar a half hour before the showtime, so for example, 7:00 PM, and usually our shows are only about no more than two hours, maybe three at the very max, and so the bar closes after the intermission, so in the middle of that performance. So, it coincides with our operations of the performances. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you very much.
Thank you, B.
Any other questions? Okay, great. So, public hearing, final consideration, all in one. So, let's see, Mr. Nugent, this is back to you as the Land Use and Planning Chair for, make a motion on the floor.
Short motion, too. I move approval of the tavern conditional use request located at 1200 Shakespeare Street in accordance with Missoula City zoning ordinance Title 20, Section 20 dot 15 dot 020 dot D, 20 dot 85 dot 070, and 20 dot 105 dot 040 dot 1 dot 2, or it might be I dot 2, based on the findings of fact in the staff report, and subject to one condition of approval.
Great, thank you. A motion has been made, and that does open it up for an additional public comment for the motion on the floor. Is there any public comment on the motion? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Joy French, F-R-E-N-C-H, and I'm affiliated with Bear Bay Dance and the Westside Theater. I had the great pleasure, and I'm very proud to say I founded the company 13 years ago, and we've now really become an institution for arts and performing arts and dance and movement, which is really exciting. And now that we're running the Westside Theater, we have a home for about 11 years. We were floating around to theaters around town, and which had its benefits, but it's really nice to have a home base and to really feel like we're creating more roots and offering more opportunities. So, having the theater allows us to have more performances, to have more artists being presented in town, as well as more outreach with education and all the wonderful things we can do in the arts. So, we're really excited about that. And then, the beer and wine license is really just attached to further comment is to a ticketed event, so you won't even be able to get a beer just dropping by our theater at any time. It's really if you buy a ticket or whatnot, you can have a glass of wine, which just amplifies kind of the cultural experience of the fabric of our lives here, right? To be able to go to a show and enjoy a glass of wine. So, I really appreciate you hearing us out and voting on that tonight, so thanks.
Thank you for your comments, and congratulations.
Thanks.
Come on up.
Hello, I'm John DeBoer, J-O-H-N-D-E-B-O-E-R, and I am an actor and voice coach by training, even though I'm losing my voice tonight. I'm also a professor and administrator at the university, and I am really excited to support this motion as a resident of the West Side as well. Having Westside Theater and Bear Bay Dance in our neighborhood has been really wonderful for having the ability to walk out my front door and be able to see a show in about a five-minute walk. It's also really amazing for the arts community in town and our students at the university and in local high schools, et cetera, to have their first professional experience in theater and in dance, to be able to be paid to do the work that they do and to make the art that brings them to life. And it's revenue like this that helps us be able to support our students, to be able to support our local artists, to make sure that they can make a living or at least recoup some of their investment doing the things that they love. I worked in theaters just like this when I was a graduate student in Richmond, Virginia, and without the ability to have early paid work, I wouldn't be where I am today. And it's a real reason why a lot of our artists stay in Missoula, so that they can make a home here and make art here, because they're able to be paid for their work. So, I support this motion, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Mr. Flanagan?
Hello, my name is Shannon Flanagan. That's F-L-A-N-A-G-A-N. I'm here in support of Bear Bay Dance and Westside Theater. I'm on their board, I'm on two other arts boards in Missoula as well, and one of the things that I think is excellent about Westside Theater and Bear Bay Dance is it's Montana and Western Montana's only full-season modern dance company, a contemporary dance company. So, it gives us a unique opportunity. It's something that we don't have in other parts of Missoula or other parts of Western Montana, even going as far east as Bozeman and Billings. Another thing that's kind of vital about the way that they contribute to our community is they give artists from the University of Montana who've been dancing there an opportunity to dance professionally in Missoula, which is really, really unique. They get paid for their work, they do beautiful work, and it's something that I'm really attached to and love. Also, I think that, you know, over 13 years of history, we've been able to provide a really nice, unique arts experience in Missoula. So, I appreciate your support and look forward to your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Any others this evening? No more in the room? Is there anybody online? Not seeing any. Yeah, okay. Okay, not seeing any public comment online, then we will go ahead and move to council comments, please. Ms. Cheryl?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to say that I'm happy to support this. Having run a nonprofit, I know that any ability to diversify your income stream is really important, and I just, I love what the theater does, and I'm excited to give you guys the opportunity to do this and have it be a unique experience for those in our community.
Great, thank you for comments, Ms. Sika.
I love the theater. I'm very excited to support this. I think this is a great idea.
Thanks for your comments. Yes, Mirta, and then Daniel, please.
Thanks, I too. I'm in support of this. I want to thank you for bringing diversity to the West Side. As a former West sider, I really do appreciate the diversity of uses and the opportunities to the neighborhood and the greater community, so thanks.
Great, Mr. Carlini?
Yeah, I'm supportive of this proposal. I think the arts is one of the things that makes Missoula so special here, and I appreciate you all doing what you do and bringing it forward to us, and I guess I'm just going to reiterate that we, as a city government, are blocking theaters and things like this from being allowed in all other neighborhoods for the most part with our zoning map, and you could see with those parking mandates, those were insane if they wanted to build this nowadays. So, I just hope that we can stop blocking theaters in other neighborhoods and be able to have more arts and fun things like this all across town.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Any other council comments? All right, not seeing any then, that we will bring it to a vote. Ms. Brown, would you go ahead and do a roll call vote, please?
Sure will, thank you. Starting with Jordan.
Yes.
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Sika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lucera?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Arlino?
Yes.
And Farmer?
Yes.
That is a unanimous vote for yes.
Great, all right. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Great. That brings us to the end of our public hearings, and congratulations all, looking forward to coming and seeing a show soon. All right, so that brings us then to committee reports. We do not have any committee reports this evening, and we, item number 11, new business, we have no new business this evening. And so, just communications from the mayor, I'll just mention, I don't have really much to say tonight, other than Annalise Brown, who has been handling the city clerk function this evening, works in the city clerk's office. She's our legislative services specialist, and just in case you all don't know Annalise, she'll be, she's on staff, she'll be covering for Ms. Trimble when Ms. Trimble's unable to, and Ms. Trimble will be away at our next meeting, so just want to make sure you all aware of that. And that's all I have. Are there council comments this evening? I'll go ahead and start on my right side with Counselor Savage.
I'll pass tonight, thank you.
Okay.
I'll also pass, thank you.
I will pass too, thanks. I will also pass.
All right. Oh, man, whipping around the horseshoe here.
I'm going to pass because I know that Councilman Campbell has a few words to say, but I just want to let him, let him say those words.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to pass for the exact same reason and defer to Councilman Campbell.
Great, thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's take a couple of minutes here, but the Missoula Police Department this past weekend, if you don't know, general public out there, indeed, the Missoula community as a whole suffered a great loss, a great public servant in that of Sergeant Jerry Odlin. I'm going to try to share a screen here.
Well done. Looks like it's up there.
So, this is a photo of the two of us. He's in the foreground, I'm in the background. Even though it's in black and white, it wasn't that terribly. So, back in 2000, we were actually both on probation, we were probationary officers back in 2000, the same team, and we were blessed to spend so much time together in patrol. Majority of our careers, both were in patrol, and fast forward to... This is from my retirement ceremony, December before, last December of '22. He was present for... I just want to talk a little bit about the time in between those two photos. Sergeant Odlin, a great asset to the community, irreplaceable asset for the Missoula Police Department. He was right away a field training officer for the department, training our new officers, come onboard and get them trained up to the Missoula Police Department standard before he let them go out on the streets on their own. With me, he made corporal in 2007. Shortly thereafter, he got promoted to sergeant. I believe that was in late 2008, and that came as no surprise to me. I mean, he was hardwired for this line of work. Comes from a law enforcement background, a law enforcement family, very well-versed in law enforcement, just a great guy all around. I think of the time I've had working with him and for him over the years, I was fortunate enough to be corporal on his team squad for quite some time, and just a great time working with him and, you know, trying to emulate his standard. You know, there's a phraseology we use in law enforcement, Sergeant Putty's here with us as well. You know, when we get to first-line supervisor ranks, corporal sergeant, we go a leadership training school, and they talk about four Rs, you know, doing the right thing the right way, for the right time, the right reason, and he lived that every day, and in fact, I think it was on his wall behind his desk downstairs that we shared for a final couple of years, and he lived that day in and day out. And, you know, eventually, I got promoted to sergeant, and, you know, I tried to emulate that work ethic, that ethos. You know, just look at my experience with him and try to bring that forward to the officers that are under my charge at that point in time. Later, latter years of my career, we had both transferred to administrative division of the department. We spent majority, vast majority of our years in patrol, working the street, lots of stories to tell. You know, he had a quick wit about him. If I may indulge you for one moment.
Please.
Great sense of humor, great wit about him. I remember one time, he's a big Buccaneers fan, he was a big Buccaneers fan, you know, they made a run this year, but this was back when Tom Brady took him to the Super Bowl, and I texted him, you know, me speaking here, "Got to go to work, but good luck to your Bucks," and right away, he says, "Thanks, man. Sorry you have to go to your second day of work after eight days without using any time off." And the idea there was, and so I just changed squads, one squad and another, it just so happened, my luck that my days off, but the oncoming days off of the squad, I was going to, so, you know, right away, and, you know, I responded, "I detected unbashed sarcasm, but thanks," to which he quipped, "Next detective sergeant right there." So, and that just, you know, his quick wit, his sense of humor, I loved his sarcasm, you know, I loved working with him, and, you know, I got to work with him, you know, we shared an office the final couple of years, but anyway, I've said enough, you know, I could go on and on, but, you know, it's a great loss to this department, great loss to the community, you know, I, my condolences go out to his family, his wife Sherri, children, his brother Chris, Odlin, who is also a police officer in our department, he retired a detective, or excuse me, a captain a number of years ago. Condolences as well, of course, the Missoula Police Department as a whole. I mean, it's a huge loss for them, it's going to take some time to work through this, I know. But I take some comfort in the fact that, you know, particularly a case of, you know, his wife Sherri and the police department, you know, police department's a family, and I know firsthand from my personal experience, that family is going to be there for Sherri, for the family going forward, and it just, you know, that's one of the great things about that law enforcement family, that was there, was there for me in my time of need. I know it's going to be there for the Odlin family as well, so Godspeed, Jerry, and I'm not saying I'm going, I miss you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. I say from, I think, all of us that nobody could have spoken to this and Mr. Odlin's passing better than you this evening, and given that you've joined council recently in your history and time with the Missoula Police Department, we appreciate your remarks and your remembrance of Sergeant Jerry Odlin, and he absolutely we missed, and it's a member of our Missoula family. That does leave a very large gap. Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Campbell, for sharing those personal stories. I know that, you know, cancer sucks. There's just no two ways about it, and it obviously took a great Missoulian and took a beloved family member all too soon, and unfortunately, there are too many examples of that in our community, but in our lives. So, thank you for sharing, and I had the pleasure of, with Mr. Nugent, attending a fundraiser next door one Monday night, and the place was packed. So, it just was a very quick testament to the, you know, the impact one person can have on so many lives, so. I hate to somewhat awkwardly pivot, but my comments tonight were planned ahead of time because I just couldn't let today go without acknowledging that today would have been the 51st anniversary of the passage of Roe v. Wade, but instead, it's been 577 days since the overturning of that, and it, there's lots to be said about it, and it affects everybody's lives, because unfortunately, the news has been filled in the last 577 days of horrific stories of people trying to access basic health care and being denied because doctors are afraid or feel that they do not have the legal ability to issue standard health care, and women's lives are put in jeopardy. And I think that there is an incredible misconception about, from some of in our society, about abortion is a, that it isn't basic health care, and it is not something- about abortion is a, that it isn't basic health care and it is not something that should be readily accessed, that it is a, you know, all sorts of, you know, inappropriate thoughts of like, well, it's just for people who were loose and fast and ended up getting pregnant and the, you know, actions have consequences, or whatever crazy-ass thing they can think of. But in reality, every single person at this table knows somebody who has had to have the procedure that, that is the standard abortion procedure, because everybody at this table knows somebody who's had a miscarriage. And so I think that there is a lot of women's lives who are being inadvertently put in direct dangers, women who actively want to have families, women who already have families that are not in a position to grow them or having, or would do so at a medical complication to themselves, and how would that affect the family that they leave behind? So I think that this has become a political hot potato, which is, absolutely shouldn't be. This is some of the most intimate and basic conversations that people and families have about whether or not to reproduce and how and in what manner and the time to do have that. And we are inserting politics and people's views of what the world should look like in a place that actually absolutely has no business whatsoever. So it is a tragedy and it will continue to be so. The decision by the Supreme Court kicked it back to the states, which has created a hodgepodge of states where access is legal, where access is questionable, where access is being denied, where ballot measures are being put forward to gain access, to protect access, and this is fundamental health care. You couldn't imagine a society, I hate to use this example, where cancer or Alzheimer's or any other basic health care was taken and put into such a political view. We wouldn't stand for that and we shouldn't stand for that with reproductive and women's basic health care. So it is a day I had to acknowledge passing and will, hopefully, all of us will continue to fight this injustice. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Councilor Basika.
Thanks. I just wanted to thank Bob for sharing those lovely memories and my deepest condolences to the family and to the MPD family.
Thank you. Councilor Jordan.
Thank you, I'll pass tonight.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That then concludes our communications from the mayor and council members. Miscellaneous communication reports and announcements, there is an administratively approved agreement in your, in the packet if you're interested. And other than that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 7:57. Thanks, everybody.